Everyone, I'm Ralph Page. I will be the acting chair of the planning board this evening. I'd like to open the meeting of September 8th, 2015. I have to state that we are recording this for minutes. Our director is. Elcat is recording. Is there anyone else in the audience recording?
Just good job with the reminder.
Thank you. With that, our first order of business is an interview with Mr. Townsend if you'd like to come on up.
Okay.
Are you?
What?
Joe, how are you?
Hi, Joe.
As you know, there's an opening on the planning board. You've submitted a letter. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to do it.
Okay. Well, I've been a resident of Easton Metal for seventeen years. Actually, so a little longer than that. I own a business across the street. I was on the library board of trustees. I was appointed by the Board of Selectmen in the nineties, and then I ran for the office and successfully was elected to the Board of Trustees. Then I got out of politics for a few years, and I became a selectman in 2006. I ran for office, and I became a selectman. And I saw your opening in the reminder, and it sounded like it was something that I put a letter in just to find out more about the position. I've worked with the planning board in the past, and I'm familiar with the planning board. I'm not up to speed with all the zoning regulations that apply in the town. But again, it's a board. It's a four-member board right now. It will be a five-member board after tonight or whenever you decide to fill the position. So I thought that I'd apply and find out more about the position.
Great. Would you like to open up a few questions, George? I think we started with the last time.
Yeah, I've got two basic questions. Can you show up every other Tuesday at 6:30? Six, I should say, at six.
At six. Well, as I said, I was on the Board of Selectmen. I never missed one meeting, although I was logged as missing one meeting. I had perfect attendance.
That's just my standard question. The other one is, what do you think the planning board can do to foster economic development in the town, if anything?
Well, again, it's a board, so you have to work with four other members in a board. It's not like working with a Board of Selectmen. You have three board memberships. It's a bigger board. Foster economic development? I think they would have to get a little proactive with businesses. And what I mean by that is not making things so difficult on businesses. I remember when I was on Board of Selectmen, it was made very difficult for a restaurant right here across the street. Now, all of a sudden, the rules and regulations, maybe not so much the rules and regulations, but the policemanship of the board has changed a little bit. So I think, getting back to your questions, that would be the answer.
You have a business here in town. How do you feel that either works pro or against being on the planning board? Now, you see a lot of people in the public, you know, all day long.
Well, here's how I think it would work pro, is I strictly believe in when you have a standard, there's no deviation from the standard. Without a standard, there's no deviation. And when you develop a standard, you can't have a standard for one business owner and then have different rules for a different business owner. So that would be a, with me, that would be a high with me. If you have a standard, stick to the standard. Otherwise, you know, don't enforce it on one, not the others. As far as owning a business in this town, that was your question. How would it help?
Help or hurt.
Help or hurt? I don't know so much if it would help.
You see a lot of black people every day in the public.
I don't think it would help as much as it might hurt. And how would it hurt? It would hurt by enforcing the standards that the town of Easton Metal has set. And when it comes to bylaws and signage for businesses, then there are certain businesses that may not adhere to the bylaws and others that do. So you have to enforce it on all of them, or you don't enforce it at all.
There's been talk, you know, about various departments in town getting along well or maybe not well with each other. Is that something you would have an opinion on or have any knowledge of or anything you might want to comment about, like the planning board is relating to maybe other departments?
Well, again, as a former selectman, I hear that, but I don't see it as much. I think it's an item that's sensationalized. It's, in my opinion, sensationalized. There are boards that don't get along, definitely that don't get along. But I think it's sensationalized, and it's something that you work out together with the boards. You may have to bring Town Council into the mix to find out if, you know, hey, who's right here, who's wrong, and then find out who's right and do what's right.
Michael?
My question would be, in April, do you plan on sticking around and running again for planning board, or you're just going to run or stay here until April, or do you plan on running for selectman in April?
I couldn't answer that right now, because, like I said, it's a six-month seat, or let's see, September, October, November, December, January, February, March. So it would be a seven-month seat.
Right.
I'd like to find out what's going on and how the planning board runs. I have a pretty good idea from being a selectman. And as you know, when you sat the seat, on this, I was your only vote at the time. There was a seven board membership, and I was your only vote. So I truly believed you had what it took to be on the board because of your experience and obviously, you know, you were chair of this board. So getting back to your question as far as would I run for select board? I don't know. The planning board really interests me. Otherwise, I wouldn't have submitted a letter of interest.
Okay.
And that's why I submitted the letter of interest, because I'd like to get on the planning board. If I get on, I get on. I know that the board is a strong board. It's very knowledgeable, and I'm not saying that to patronize you. George, you've been around for a while. You've been around for a while. You're kind of new on the board. Ralph's been here a while. So, I mean, everyone here is experienced as far as the board goes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's the only question you have?
That's all I have.
Okay.
My question, I'm going to stick to basically the same question I asked everyone else. We've had people looking in town to do possibly a mixed-use retail and residential, whether it be high-end apartments over retail. And I'm just curious what your thoughts would be on something like that. Currently, we don't allow it.
Okay, so right now, your question is, you have businesses or business owners that are looking into it? Into what?
Yeah, there's been people that have approached the board asking us about a mixed-use, doing in the same building, both residential, being apartments, and maybe under it doing retail. And I was just curious what your thoughts are on that going forwards. I mean, obviously, it would be a zone changer, some way to make it approved, but...
I'm not for that. I own a couple houses in this town, and I own commercial real estate. And the commercial real estate is right across the street. It's paid for. So I own a house that I rent and a house that I live in. And my feeling on that is if you're going to own, if you want to own rental property, then probably you should buy some single-family homes. But as far as converting a business to apartments above the business, I'm not for that. I'm not really wild about that recommendation at all. It would probably be a four-to-one vote, or it wouldn't be a nano-swell.
Okay. George, you have any follow-up questions?
No, I think we've covered what I was interested in.
Ty?
Yeah, I think everyone's covered things that went through my mind.
Thank you. I think we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right, thank you, Ty. Thanks, George.
I think at this time, 5:40, we're supposed to have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Is it going to be a proper executive session?
No.
No.
Nope. That would be wonderful. Please come on up.
Do you want to move aside and send them in or off to the side? How do we want to do it?
I will move.
All right, sir. They have to open them.
Yes.
All right, I'd like to bring the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. I think we'll bypass our usual flag, things that we get across the way. But our board is here, so we are prepared to work with you folks. Those are very informal. Bring it to order, but we'll...
It worked.
It worked.
I think everybody got the idea.
Yes.
Well, I think what we have in front of us, the seven members, we have four people that have submitted letters of interest. We've interviewed them. I think if I remember right, this is a decision of the seven members as a whole. This isn't the planning board suggesting a candidate to the Board of Selectmen. I think it's a majority vote.
Okay. I don't know if the board wants to say anything, but my thought process, just like with department heads and things, is you're going to be working with this person. So I wouldn't want to be the one to suggest someone that you have to work with. So I'd rather, I'd rather decide off of what your thoughts are, because you're the board that has to work with whoever you're going to choose, whoever we're going to choose. So if that helps you any, I'm basically going to be quiet until you say something. I don't know about the rest of the board, but...
Is there any wishes from our board, any person that they would like to nominate?
Angela, do you want to speak before we get going, or?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sorry, no.
It's okay. I believe in half and half of what both of them said. I do, I am very interested in the conversation, what you might have to say. But I did watch the interviews, and I do have some things in my mind, too. So if you were to decide to just go straight to a vote, I would be okay with that. Or if you'd like to share some information, some things you may have seen your trained eyes that I may not have seen.
Any comments from the board, any thoughts?
Well, personally, I am somewhat torn. I worked with Mr. Punderson a long time, and he knows what we do, and would come up to speed very quickly. On the other hand, Ms. Bushnell is definitely energetic and interested in coming into town government, and I think would be a new voice. So I'm kind of on the fence, but those are the two names that come to my mind immediately.
I'm torn also. Torn between all four for different reasons. I think I'm probably leaning towards Ms. Bushnell also. And the reason why is Mr. Townsend and Mr. Punderson are definitely experienced people who have both had experience with the Board of Selectmen and the planning board, Mr. Punderson with the planning board before. And I think both of them very well could have aspirations of wanting to run again for the Board of Selectmen, and maybe that's the ultimate position they may want to end up with. And if that were the case, it's not definite, but if that were the case, that would leave us with another vacancy. I do feel Ms. Bushnell is bright and could get up to speed quickly as well. But I got to be honest with you, it's really, really hard for me to make that decision of the four candidates, because I see a lot of good strengths in each and every one of them.
Mike?
All right, I will probably be voting in favor of Ms. Bushnell for several reasons. To bring yet another self-employed person to this board, I think we already have three of us. A fourth is not going to, not going to change things as much as somebody who is a single mother with two kids in the school system, represents a large company in town. So I think it would be a whole different set of eyes, different set of values. She does bring enthusiasm, and I think she would be a good fit for this board. So that's where I'll be placing my vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I think it's a difficult decision. As the board said, we have four extremely good candidates that have stepped forwards. I would have to lean towards Ms. Bushnell. I think she brings a lot of energy. That was the first thing I noticed in the interview. Again, bringing her up to speed, I think she's extremely bright and can get up to speed extremely quick. She has worked in the building industry. She knows blueprints inside, out, and backwards, and I think that's where I would be leaning at this time.
I can't disagree with anything that I've heard, so...
I tend to agree also. So I don't know what your next step is. I'm not going to propose someone, or?
I'll make a motion to recommend Ms. Bushnell for next planning board member.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, then, of the joint board. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Deb is our next member on a six-to-one vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need to continue your meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to take a recess for the amount of time it takes to drive from here to the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd just like to say one thing before we leave.
Sure.
I think the interviews weren't done right, because like when a selectman interview people, we keep the people out in the hallway, bring them in one at a time, where you people chose to let everybody sit there and listen to everybody else's answers. I don't think that was fair to some of the people, or I should say, for the first two people that you interviewed before.
It's the way it's been done previously.
Huh?
That's the way it's been done previously.
That's what?
That's the way it has been done previously.
Well, I'm saying I think it's wrong, because you're giving the people, the last two people, the advantage of listening to the other people on their answers. I mean, we don't do that for the police. We don't do it for the firemen. We don't do it for anybody. I think it's wrong that you let everybody sit there and listen to everybody else's answers, because if they study you people and see the frown on your face or whatever when they answer the question, naturally, they're going to try to give you something different.
We appreciate your input. If we had been able to have a joint meeting, we could have discussed procedures, but we were unable to have a joint meeting last time, so we couldn't discuss procedures with you. But thank you for your thoughts.
Yeah. You didn't ask us for it either, so...
Well, we couldn't meet with them, as we went into the sun. Thanks, gentlemen. I can't thank you unless you gentlemen once more, because you love it. You love a coed board, so.
Thank you.
And Ralph.
Thank you.
Do we need to? I'll entertain a motion for a recess until 6:00 PM?
Before we do that, can I make a motion to reorganize this?
No, no.
We're in the planning board meeting.
No, you're not.
Yes, we did. We opened, we opened the planning board meeting at, we opened it as a planning board meeting.
I'd prefer to wait till six.
We did not open their meeting. We never closed ours.
Yeah, let's, let's make a motion to recess till six.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Good evening. I'd like to open the 6:00 PM planning board meeting. Do I need to go through the recording again? Our director is recording this for the minutes. Elcat is recording. And is there anyone else in the audience recording?
Just good job with the reminder.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to start by asking the board if they would like to make a motion to reorganize, and if so, do they have any nominations or suggestions?
I move to reorganize and nominate Ralph Page as chair.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion to make Ty clerk.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Sounds good.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do we have a vice chair?
Oh. I can't move it.
Would you like to nominate someone?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mike. I'd like to nominate Mike as vice chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
All those opposed?
By the way, it wasn't...
Didn't really make a difference, Mike.
I get to shorten the stick again.
Okay, we're going to start our business. We've got a few minutes, so why don't we start with the waiver of site plans? Do we have, which one would you like to start?
Where are you? Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Heritage MZLLC. Owner's address is care of Winslow Property Management LLC, 80 Hayden Avenue, Lexington, Mass. Owner's telephone number is listed here. Name of proposed business is Petco. Owner of business is Petco Animal Supplies Delaware Corporation, 9125 Re- Rachel Road, San Diego, California. Property address is 440 North Main Street. They're moving into the i-party location. Property district is industrial. It isn't allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 9 to 10; Sunday, 10 to 8. Number of employees, including owner, is eighteen. Summary of business is retail sales of pet food, pet accessories, and other pet-related products in such pets such as fish, birds, small reptiles, and other small animals. Also provides pet services, including dog grooming, dog training, and simple veterinary procedures such as vacinations. The application has been signed and dated August 29th, 2015, and also dated August 19th, 2015.
Robin, is this, this is in the shopping mall, and it's a split district, isn't it? Part of it's industrial, part something else?
The very beginning of the front of it is, I just needed to look here.
The whole thing is commercial, except for, the whole thing is commercial?
It's business in the front, or...
All right, what's it allowed to use?
Industrial on the other side of the road.
I'm just concerned with, is that your zoning book?
Yes.
We've gone through a lot of this. I'm not sure if grooming is allowed without a special permit. And I spoke to him about that.
Will they be selling dogs?
No, not unless they...
They're selling animals, aren't they?
No, it's just, yeah, retail. It's...
Small animals.
No, in the use section. And we went through this.
Kennels are not in allowed use.
No, it's not a kennel.
Well, it's not considered a kennel. It's considered retail sales.
Well, if they keep dogs there, it's a kennel.
No, most kennels don't sell the dogs.
A lot of them do.
No, it's not a kennel.
What do you call a place that breeds dogs?
A breeder.
Yeah, a breeder.
But they keep the dogs in a kennel?
Yeah, they do.
Kennels are not allowed. Commercial kennels are not allowed. They are by special permit.
No, they're not.
It says grooming. Yeah, see, this is the problem, right here. It's the grooming. And I told them that, that it needs a special permit to groom. They can do the rest of it, but not grooming. We have pet daycare and grooming that was approved, oh, a few years ago, new bylaw.
Is there any way we can bring them in for discussion?
Sure. I mean, I've been speaking with them for months on that and told them that. When Ty was reading it, I thought, wait a minute, that shouldn't, yeah, no, it's not allowed without a special permit, so...
I mean, that would be my thought to bring them in. It'll give us a little time to, you know, take another look at it, to discuss the kennel portion and the grooming.
Yeah. I'm just looking this up here right now in the zoning bylaws. Commercial kennel is not allowed anywhere in town?
Yes.
There's no special permit, nothing. It's not allowed.
Yeah, I would be, I'd be up to ask for a legal opinion on whether retail sales of a dog would be considered, under our definition, a kennel.
If you're keeping dogs in cages, it's a kennel. I'm sorry, and it's commercial.
Jeez, then...
Well, the grooming part of it is out anyway.
Yeah. I mean, I would ask, it would be my thought to bring them in, and let's have a discussion with them as far as exactly what's going to happen.
Okay.
So would you motion to continue?
Actually, just not even to deal with it. It's a request for waiver. So I would basically deny the waiver pending more detail.
Do you want to vote on the waiver excluding the dog grooming portion of it and have them come in for that discussion?
That's a commercial district. It's not allowed in a commercial district, grooming.
What do you mean, commercial?
The district is commercial.
No.
Yes, it is. Look at the zoning map. The zoning map says it's commercial.
I think this is one that we should table for now, and let's bring up again after we have more information.
For whatever reason, that whole shopping center is zoned commercial, not business.
I will say, I did do, I went on to our town's website, and it's listed as multi-zoned.
That's because...
The entire shopping center...
The back of it is industrial.
The point across the railroad track is industrial.
I'd just like to get some additional clarification.
I have, but it's not commercial. It's, that's incorrect. Otherwise, none of the businesses that are there would be allowed in there right now if it wasn't industrial.
Then we need to get the zoning map corrected.
That one, I'm not sure how old it is. But in the front where the restaurant is, is business.
It's 2007.
I can look into it.
Great.
All right. So you want, you want the owners to come in?
Yes.
Okay.
We still got some time. Let's move on to St. Paul's Church, the waiver of site.
Request for waiver of site plan review. Roman Catholic Church, St. Paul, the Epistle. Owner's address is 235 Dwight Road, Springfield, Mass. 01108. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is church. Number of employees, including owner, is three. Date of last parking plan is 2012. Summary of business, we added air conditioning in August of 2015. Did not realize that we needed planning board approval. Attached is a copy of the contractor's bid and receipt for the work done. Pictures of outside compressor. We will research Marbivites. The application has been signed and dated September 4th, 2015. There's the photo. Here is the contractor's license. Here is the contractor's bid and receipt.
And Ty, you went and looked at it, so maybe you want to tell the board what you...
Yeah. I went and looked at it. It's a freestanding compressor. It's a freestanding compressor, and it's not on the approved site plan. I think with the Marbivites around it, I think it'll be fine.
And they're proposing to plant Marbivites around it?
They're, right now, it says on the application they're researching Marbivites to put around it. It doesn't say to put around it, but I'm assuming they're researching the Marbivites to do so.
No.
Just a correction on that. The Marbivites that they're looking at is the back hedgerow. They replaced a few of them with a different brand. Instead of Green Giants, they used Ark American. As far as the air conditioner unit, they're not actually proposing to plant anything around it. The sidewalk is a short distance away. This is between the back sidewalk, and it is, what they tried to do is add in another request that we had for them at the same time.
The issue was noise by the neighbors.
Absolutely. That's what the complaint came in at. Did a little research today. Went through a couple residential areas, including Porter Road with St... Went through a couple residential areas, including Porter Road with St. Mark's, St. Luke's Church. They have four air conditioner units larger than that sitting right in front of the building. Went down to St. Lutheran on Elm Street. They've got two larger units than that right out in front. I don't believe anyone's ever complained about them. I was actually there when the unit kicked on, and I could still hear the actual pool filter from the gentleman over this.
Okay. Thank you.
It also wasn't on the site plan?
It isn't on the site plan, and that's why a waiver of site plan has been requested. It's under 2,000 square feet. My thought would be it's appropriate, but...
It, it looks like a standard residential-type air conditioner. It's not a commercial, big, huge unit or anything.
It's never very big.
No.
It's small, size of this table, half the size of the table.
Looks like it's about as big as mine.
It is.
And my neighbors don't complain.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can, it's not a problem.
Yeah. 6:15, we have a request for signage from LaPlante Construction for Farmington Bank.
Okay, I'm gonna recuse myself for this one.
Do we have someone that would like to read this in?
Business name and address is Farmington Bank. Property owner's name and address is LLP North Main LLC. Square foot area for pole sign is 40 by 30 by 15. Double or single faces, double-faced. Height above ground level is 110 inches. If attached, does the sign project over pedestrian or vehicular way? No. Setback from property line is 14 feet. Distance to nearest side yard line is 52 feet. Sign is illuminated. Sign is permanent. Total number of existing signs is three. Total square feet of existing signs is 85 square feet. Total number of proposed and existing signs is three. Total square feet of proposed and existing, existing signs, 85 square feet.
I think this is an application for three separate signs.
It is.
That they've combined into one application.
Okay.
And if I could, the, the applicant is scheduled for the ZBA for the setback, the smaller amount of setback. So what the planning board is looking to do is approve the actual ground sign itself with regard to size, as well as the two building applications, but knowing full well that the setback is gonna be before the ZBA.
You understand that?
Yes.
My other question is, it says there is existing signs. There aren't any existing signs.
Yeah, it shouldn't.
I got misread it.
Well, I think it says existing and proposed is three, because all of these are proposed.
No, I don't remember existing signs.
Existing signs is three, but there are no signs.
Yeah. I had number...
That's all that happens.
That was a...
Okay, it's just minor thing.
Proposed, zero, existing.
But you know, I'm awake and listening.
Well, let's start. So what, what would you like to see for signage there?
So this is, this is the bank's proposed sign as the directory sign. This has Farmington Bank, LaPlante Construction, M. Scott Investment Services, and Robert Phalen, with a number, a street number of 61 slash 61R, which was brought up at the, at the previous meetings to number them that way. So then 61 is the front, 61R is the rear. So this is a directory sign for the two buildings, the proposed directory sign for the two buildings. The square footage that we have here is taken from the white, the top of the sign on the white, all the way down to the bottom of Robert M. Phalen, white, and back up. And it is just a tick under 40 square feet.
Does this, the white, project above the blue?
It does. It does. It's a total of 110.10 inches above ground.
And does this rest right on the ground?
It does.
Or is there a pillar or anything?
There's a post that goes down, a mounting post that goes down and into the ground.
Okay.
But the bottom of the blue is the, is the grade of the sign.
Any thoughts, questions?
Looks good to me.
Looks good to me.
My only concern is that if you have another tenant, because you're right at the maximum, that if all of a sudden he adds another signage down here, that he'll be over.
Yeah, we would understand that, you know, it, it...
It would have to be reworked.
That would be highly unlikely, but we would redo these to stay within the total. We wouldn't add anything further. So these would be broken up differently and smaller, quite frankly.
And if we approve this one, it would be contingent upon the ZBA approving the distance from...
This setback.
Yeah, this is, this is the setback. And I understand we're not, we're not voting on setback, but this is the proposed location that we have, which is the 52 feet off the, off the side lot, but only 14 feet back off the front setback.
And the police department has looked at it and determined that the distance in the vehicular view won't be hampered. And so they're recommending that the ZBA allow the request for variance. The building itself is 25 feet back, which is the required amount. But to put the sign at 25 feet, it would have to be at the side, and it's been determined that it would be more dangerous because people looking for it might come upon it and then wanna back up or something because they'd be past the driveway. So that's why he's going to the ZBA. But because it's a ground sign and has to be approved by the planning board first, it's come before you first.
Do you wanna vote on each individual sign as we go?
I think we vote on all of them together.
This is the, this is the main sign on the front gable. We have taken a rectangular area out of this, even though these are letters applied directly to the gable, with their logo applied directly to the gable. But again, we come up with a total square footage of 30 square feet for the main gable sign. And then we have the entry sign at 50% of the square footage. So they, they dropped the logo down along the side here, reduced the size of the lettering so that, again, and they're 14 and a half inches tall by 148 inches long for a total sign square footage of 15, 15 square feet for that secondary access sign.
If I'm right, this is the side that faces Ben...
It is.
Okay.
I'm good.
That's good. Make a motion to approve the sign permit?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? The only comment that I would have is that the ground sign is simply contingent upon the ZBA's approval for the setback variance.
And subject to the approval of the building inspector.
All three signs.
All three signs.
So that was a vote on all three?
This will be a vote on all three. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one's left up here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our, next is a request for signage for Carta Mundi, 443 Shaker Road.
All of it?
All of it. We have a lot of them.
There's a lot of them.
There's actually 11 of them.
Is there a way to restructure the board?
What you could do is basically what they...
I do have some copies of that to help.
What they all are is replacing the existing signs, all of them, for the size that they are. You're not increasing the size of anything.
Not moving any of them to the same location they've been for decades.
And there's, you see, shipping...
Same type of sign.
Same type.
Everything is exactly the same.
Carter, if we start with just the top so that we get the general information in...
And here's the door, yeah.
All the applications are pretty the same.
They're exactly the same. They're replacing all the existing signs.
Read, read one and then incorporate the others by reference.
One times 11, yeah.
Okay.
From the audience.
This would be one times 11?
I'm sorry, name and address, in reference, please.
Town of East Long Metal, sign permit application dated September 20, excuse me, September 2nd, 2015. Name of, name of business and address is Carta Mundi, East Long Metal LLC, 443 Shaker Road, East Long Metal. Business owner's name and address is the same. Property owner's name and address is the same. Telephone numbers are listed here. Nearest intersection is Shaker and Denzil Roads. This particular sign, square footage above proposed sign is 45.75, double-faced. It is single-faced. Free, yeah, it is freestanding. It is not attached to the building. Freestanding height above the ground is 38 inches. There's no projections if, no projections. If attached to the building, does the sign project over pedestrian vehicular way? No, and it's not applicable. Setbacks from property line is 75 plus feet. Distance to nearest side yard is 75 plus feet. It's not illuminated. The sign is temporary. Number of days will be 30 days to October 9th. Number of existing signs, 11. Square footage of existing signs is 293.3. Total number proposed in existing signs is 11. Total square footage of proposed and existing signs is 293.3. The application has been signed. The estimated cost is $400. A sign affidavit is attached.
That's the temporary one that...
This, this is the banner.
Temporary banner.
Right.
That you allow.
We were very fortunate at Hasbro to have got a new owner, and they're keeping the site leadership team, of which I'm part of, the same, which is great.
And could we have your name?
Yes, my name is, my name is Jack Pulp, P-O-P-P. I'm the vice president of technical services, a member of the leadership team. We appreciate you hearing our, our request. Again, we are fortunate to have a global manufacturing company who selected our site and our business and our employees to add to their business and, and take it over from Hasbro. So we're looking to grow the business, add jobs, and we just looking to make the name change. I think for the amount of money they paid for, for everything, and it should be okay to change the signage to their logo and their name. So that's what we're trying to do.
Sure.
We're not trying to add any, anything like that. We're just trying, in fact, the front one would be, actually be...
Smaller.
Smaller, because we're taking the Hasbro H off of that.
Right.
And just making it straight across.
Now, are all the signs at this point temporary?
No, the only temporary, Harry Arubach Agnoli Sign Company in Springfield, Massachusetts. No, the answer to that question is, the only temporary sign that you've granted us is the, is the banner.
The one banner up front.
The one banner.
Okay.
This will change to a permanent sign. This sign is illuminated, and that's the next A that you'll see.
At this point, we have not changed any of the other ones, put any other banners up, just this one up front.
So they're all exactly the same?
Yeah.
So can you make a motion to approve the permanent signs?
The what?
Do you want to read, do you want to read, do we have to read through them?